Good evening, everyone. We'll welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. We're being videotaped by our good friends at Douglas Cable. Give them a like or subscribe. Boost those numbers. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's okay, Hal. We were very prompt, knowing full well that you could catch up to speed. So, for announcements, chairman's announcements, just a quick shout out to Ross and his colleagues over at the Master Plan Committee, watching some of those meetings. They've been very thoughtful and productive and collaborative. So, I want to give a shout out to the folks serving on that committee and actually to all committee members that are helping drive this town to where it needs to be. So with that, we will move right to an Oktoberfest Committee One Day Alcohol License. It's a public hearing. Tony, you want to come on up? Good evening.
Hi, guys. It's happening too fast.
Month away.
We've been doing this for, I don't know, coming up on 30 years now.
Wow.
It's about 10 years of doing the Beer Garden at Oktoberfest. It's been very successful. So, it's pretty much a repeat of what we did last year. So, we put an application in. I'll answer any questions, yeah, but it's pretty much standard stuff.
At this point.
So, we're going to have sun or rain? That's the $64 question.
Whatever we have, it'll be a busy day.
You can survive anything.
Pretty much.
Just a question to the chair. Is the Beer Garden going to be same location as the years before?
Yep. Yep. It's exactly the same. We get, we get used to the back lot behind the junk store, kind of rope off the area. It's not controlled.
Okay. And what, the Gorilla Main did something last year or so?
Yeah, they did something in their down parking lot.
Yeah.
They didn't apply yet.
Yeah, we haven't seen or heard anything there. But I do know Tony and his team are militant when it comes to following the rules, and I have no issues whatsoever with approving this. Oktoberfest's a great town event, and you guys do a great job.
We look forward to it every year. The thing happens, though, is every year it comes faster and faster.
Yep.
Seems like we just did it, and here it is.
And here it is again. With all things, so I would entertain a motion to approve the one-day alcohol license.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the Oktoberfest Committee's one-day alcohol license.
Made by Ross, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's 5-0 unanimous. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Moving on, we would like to talk ice cream truck with our friends at the Common. Good evening.
Good evening. To Lynn Krasny, Douglas Common Preservation Society.
Melissa Havley from Rhode.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, you want to do an ice cream truck up there, which?
Yes. Melissa submitted an application for use of the Common, which includes an ice cream truck parked on Common Street. And the event is a food drive for the Douglas Food Parade. And the hours on September 22nd are 1:30, 4:30. That's for setup and tear down included in that period of time. The ice cream truck is all licensed and permitted with the Board of Health, so.
So, here you are.
Here we are.
So, and I know this is running parallel right to the Common, so you're not obstructing the town right away or any stretch.
Correct.
Just doing it for safety.
It's only three hours, too.
One concern of mine was just the side of the patrons of the, of the ice cream truck. Would it be facing the Common so we don't have people in the street?
Yes.
Getting the ice cream?
Yes. And we don't expect heavy traffic up there with that either. People will arrive at different times intermittently through the two-hour period.
And bring a canned good and get an ice cream. Is that the rule?
Yeah. So, I'll be sponsoring as a local real estate agent, the first 50 people to come.
Excellent.
Get an ice cream that bring food goods to the food pantry.
Great.
Save some chocolate chip for me and maple walnut for my friend around the table here.
See what I can do.
So, without any further questions or concerns, entertain a motion.
Just one question. The, your insurance certificate's on file with the Board of Health.
Yeah, the ice cream truck already called.
Yep.
To get that.
That's all. Sorry.
That's good. Good question. Any others?
Move approval of the application.
Motion's been made by Hal.
Second by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0 unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Great cause, good idea. Thank you.
Great, Dan.
See you on the 22nd.
Yes. Chris, we're going to talk a little bit about the tax exemption discussion with you.
Just give me a second to get joined into Zoom so that we can see the.
While you do that, I'll point out Town Administrator Wojcik is now online, as is Matthew Benoit.
Gene, how's this?
A little better, thank you.
You can never hear him.
Oh.
She tricked us. She's normally sitting over there. Oh, they took all their chairs away.
Chris, are you working to beam that into the slide?
Yeah, she's going to, she's going to make me a presenter once I get logged in.
Okay.
But I know if I put my computer to sleep, it doesn't work well, so.
Do you need a little time? I can?
Nope, just, just about there now. Mine, Zoom's being fickle. Yeah, I clicked the link and it didn't go through, so I just got to grab the meeting ID.
So, Mr. Chairman, in, in radio, since we hate dead air so much, I'll vamble while Chris is looking this up, so that people know what he's talking about when he gets there. There are, oh, here we go.
You mute yourself.
Well, just turn off and bring it on.
There we go.
There you go.
Fire away, Matt.
The wonders of technology never cease. So, what, what Chris has been working on is a request to look into the different statutes that authorize senior exemptions from real estate tax. Douglas already has an existing policy. The request was to review the options and see if that policy could be changed by town meeting, and what it would cost the town if town meeting were to go ahead and do that. So, I think, looks like Chris is ready, but that is the purpose of this conversation.
Yep. So, tonight, I just want to get you familiar with basically Chapter Section 9, Section 5C and 1/2. It's a local option for increasing the exemption amounts for all clauses, though. Really, I'm just going to work my way through the law. This is the entire law right here. Very boring read. I'm not going to, I'm going to break it down into smaller pieces and hopefully put it into English for, for the board and through the board, the public. So, essentially, you know, a city in town that can accept this section, like I said, provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5C and 1/2. It's got some language about, you know, that the town is certified by the Commissioner of Revenue. Every town is certified by the Commissioner of Revenue. Otherwise, you don't get a tax rate, so. But, you know, legally, this language has to be there, I guess. Shall be granted additional exemption that shall be uniform for all exemptions. What this means is you can't pick and choose an exemption and say we want veterans to get 50% and blind people get 25%. If you adopt the provisions, set a percentage, it applies to every exemption that we have. So, it's just, again, part of the language. Exemption amount shall not exceed 100% of the exemption for which the taxpayer qualifies. This simply means we can set a, an exemption, a percentage of local option from 1 to 100%. So, on the right here, you know, these are the base amounts for the exemptions we have. So, if we're looking at, you know, well, that's a.
Tough to see.
Yeah. So, this, this bottom one here is 41C. The base exemption is $1,000. If this is, you know, under this example, if we're using a 50% exemption, exemption level or 50% local option, they would be eligible for up to an additional $500 off. So, the exemption would go from $1,000 to a maximum of $1,500. Like I said, you can go from 1% to all the way up to 100. So, you could bake that a $2,000 maximum exemption. As may be determined by the legislative body, for Douglas, that means it's adopted at town meeting. They're the legislative board for the town. And not later than the beginning of the fiscal year. All this means is you have to enact this before the start of the fiscal year in which it takes effect. So, won't, wouldn't take effect till FY '26 in this case, if we did it at the November meeting, or I guess in reality, the May meeting. Execution of, so how do we implement this if we were to adopt it? It is an additional exemption, so whatever you get for the base amount, you get regardless of whether the town adopted this or not. So, this is, this is extra for the taxpayer. It's just increasing the dollar amounts. This language probably applied in the 80s, but exemption cannot reduce the taxes below 10% of the original tax amount. No one is reaching that threshold because you have to have an owner-occupied residence, and you just, it's mathematically impossible to, for that, anybody to fall into that. Like I said, I think it's just dated language that's been there since, you know, tax bills were probably 1,500 and the exemption was 1,000. This does apply here, and this is what trips up some people when they implement this, provided further that the additional exemption shall not result in any taxpayer paying less than the taxes paid in the previous year. Simply put, the net taxes of taxpayers' net pet tax cannot be less than they were the previous year as a result of this local option. And I actually have a model to show you how that works mathematically. And that's why, you know, it's not as simple. I say it's a maximum of, you know, 1,500 if you chose 50%, because the maximum is also determined by the, the net taxes from the previous year. Acceptance to this shall not increase the amount that otherwise would have been reimbursed, simply saying that Douglas taxpayers would be the people funding this. It's a local option. There's no state reimbursement. The town currently issues about $60,000 worth of exemptions that would be subject to this increase. So, you know, you're ranging from $600 at 1% to $60,000 exposure at 100%. Hit the big benchmarks, 25%, $15,000, 50%, $30,000, 75%, $45,000.
$60,000, is that assessed value or is that?
That's, that's cash. That's.
Cash?
Cash. Money off the, total money off of residents' tax bills. Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a massive amount of money, but it would be an annual. This isn't a one time. This is every year going forward. So, when we talk about, if I talk about the impact of it down at the bottom row here, let me start at the top. When we talk about the tax rate, I'm just doing a simple 2 and 1/2% increase every year, just a simple prop 2 and 1/2, just to show an increase in someone's tax bill over time. So, just say in 2025, they, you know, taxpayer didn't, didn't apply. 2026, they applied for the first time. They'll get the $1,000 base amount, but because their net taxes are less than the prior year's net taxes, you can see on the local option line, they get no money. 2027, taxes go up a little bit. They get the base amount. They get an additional 12813 in local option, but you notice that their net amount stays flat. So, that's what this does mechanically, is, is it sort of freezes your tax bill for a couple of years until you've reached, you know, in this case, I'm using that 50% example, you know, until you've reached that $500 upper threshold on the local option. And then you can see at that point, their tax bills continue to increase from that point forward. You know, different exemptions, they'll max out at different times because obviously, you know, if you have $175 exemption and an $87 local option, you're going to eat up that $87 a lot more than you would a $1,500. But this is just to show mechanically, you know, mathematically, how it, how it implements over time.
And none of this takes in account reevaluations?
Every year. And I'll, I'll get to that in a little bit, but, but certainly, yeah, every year, we have to individually calculate every exemption because situations change, abatements, the market value of whatever class of property taxpayer A may own, may change in value differently than whatever property taxpayer B may own. So, it is, it is a little bit of work for, for the assessor's office, but I'll actually get to that. It's, it's not anything to be concerned with. Things to consider is, you know, when we talk about working our way up to that maximum exemption, overrides clearly when, when the levy changes, I want to say artificially, but outside of, you know, prop 2 and 1/2 moving, you know, they're going to reach the maximum sooner. Same thing with the debt exclusion, except, I suppose in reality, with a debt exclusion, when the debt is retired, there's a mathematical possibility that, you know, you could fall back below the maximum at that point. Capital exclusion, certainly, you would probably spike everything, everyone to maximum the one year you do the capital purchase, and then they would drop back down when that drops off the levy in the subsequent years. And abatements may push the local option below the maximum. Just, you know, things mechanically to think of, if we implemented something like that, that, that the taxpayers would need to be aware of, budgeting, we would need to be aware of. I touched on these before, cost to taxpayers, B, taxpayers are saying the entire tax base. So, if we said, you know, it's going to be $600, that's going to be split around across all 5,000 some odd taxpayers in town. If you went up 1%, if that $60,000 would be spread across everybody. I want to say the old debt exclusion for BBT is about $60,000. So, on the high end, you could probably, if, you know, if you figure out what that debt exclusion is going to cost on your tax bill, that's probably what it, this would, this would entail, being redistributed from seniors, veterans, blind, to, you know, the rest of the tax base. This has absolutely no impact on who qualifies. We're not changing any thresholds. We're not, we don't have the ability to say you can earn more money, you can be younger. This is just increasing the amounts we're giving to the people that already qualify. So.
And that's over 65?
Well, for 41C, it's over 65. For 17D, it's over 70. Their income and asset thresholds on, on 41C, there's asset threshold on 17D. Disabled military veterans would apply to them, so depending on what they qualify for. It doesn't say it doesn't apply to Clause 22D, but Clause 22D is 100% exemption, so any reduction in that is, you can't go below zero. So, they're, they're already getting zero tax bill. They can't go lower. And, once again, not eligible for reimbursement from the state. This is a local option, locally funded, so. Other considerations, like I touched on this earlier, minor impact in administering this in the assessor's office. Like I said, each year, every individual, every exemption, we do about 160. Each one has to be, would have to be individually calculated because of the mathematics of it, and then individually entered into the accounting software when we do the bill run. I say minor. When I was in Oxford, we had about 280 exemptions that we did for this program, and it took us about an hour or two to do the data entry once they were all calculated. The calculation is, you sort of handle it as they come in. You know, you grab the information, so you can drop it on a spreadsheet. Spreadsheet does the work, and then it's a matter of data entering it when the time's, time's right. It's like an hour or two extra during the bill run, and, you know, when you take three minutes 100 times over six or eight weeks, it doesn't really, you know, it's not like we need people. It's just be aware. Then the other piece of it is, people will hear the bright headline, we're increasing the threshold by 50%, 100%, whatever it is. So, my exemption went from, should go from 100 or 1,000 to 2,000, or 1,000 to 15. I will spend time with taxpayers explaining what I showed on that slide with the math about the net tax piece of it. So, it's, it's customer service. It's not a big deal, but, you know, just people, you know, full awareness of what, what the impact will be. Questions to be answered? What is the exact language for acceptance? I'm not, not an attorney. My educated guess is, you know, Douglas accepts the provisions of 5C and 1/2 and sets the percentage at X. And then clearly, the second question is, what is that percentage? You know, what, what is recommended? What, I worked with 50% in Oxford, but the program works the exact same way, no matter the percentage you choose. It's just a matter of, you know, I guess, you know, through the board and then ultimately a town meeting, what do they, what would they be willing to go to for the, you know, they said veterans, seniors, blind, folks like that, so.
So, it's all percent, sorry, Les, it's all percentage driven?
It's all percentage.
Can't be, we have budgeted X amount of dollars to be distributed amongst those that.
Nope.
Apply.
Nope. The, you know, when you get into law, you get to pick a percentage from 1 to 1, 1 to 100.
Yeah. And.
That's across the board for.
Yes. There is a new, with the Heroes Act signed last week, one that you can only do for veterans. I didn't touch on that presentation because when this was brought to me, it was focused on seniors, so I didn't want to exclude the group that was, that it was focused, you know, that I was asked to, to speak to.
Again, guess just for the audience as well as the board members, just the background on why this got started or why this came before us, just to give them.
Yeah. I was, I was asked by Selectman Stevens to, to look into this. He was, I think he came to me and he said he wanted the Oxford plan, knowing that I had done something, you know, I had, I had been in Oxford and that they had this local, local option. So, I did some digging to find out what the actual clause was, because it was in place when I got there. So, I wasn't involved in the implementation piece of it, or even what chapter of the law that was driving this, this program. So, dug into it. Once I found the law, you know, I posted the whole law in this presentation. It's pretty straightforward. You know, it's a matter of accepting it, choosing a percentage, and then it applies equally to all, all clauses. Yep.
And just to add to what Chris, from my conversations with Chris back and forth, you know, what I discovered, which I was kind of shocked, is that a lot of the, the numbers have been updated on the exemption amount since the 1980s.
Yeah.
As well as, you know, this, this program fairly for the seniors as well as the veterans, you know, the disabled veterans and people with disabilities, so, who want to stay in their homes. Question for Chris.
Chair?
Chris, you said it doesn't matter if it goes on the, it would come into effect on fiscal year '26, so it doesn't matter if it's fall or, or the May thing. I'm getting to my question for you, is, is there any danger in feeling that we're rushing it, trying to get on to the November, or is there anything that we need to do to educate people to get for a better chance of success, is what I'm, what I'm driving at?
I don't know if that's a question I can answer. My, my opinion is, after finding the law text itself, it's pretty straightforward. I don't think there's, there's a lot of ambiguity in it.
It's straightforward, but when Les first brought it up, I came into your office and I asked about it, and once you explained it to me, okay, now I fully understand it. But everybody's going to be the same way, right? So, unless they come into your office, how do we get this out to people so then they fully understand what you're trying to do?
Yeah. It, there's zero cost to implement it. What I mean is, we don't have software changes. We don't have, the, the bill runs are going to be the same amount of work for me, whether it happens in November or May. The law's just written. It has to take effect before the first year, the first day of the fiscal, start of the fiscal year, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, the reason why I'm even asking this question is, I think education is a big part of our things getting passed at town meetings, and, and when we don't go there prepared, like, like last fall, we had to pull three items off because they weren't properly explained to people going in there. And I'd rather have people know what they're voting on instead of hoping that they get it. That's all. So, I don't know how to get it to them, but it's a point that if Chris says it's a very minor effort on his part to be ready, should we consider getting it ready for May? I guess I'm looking for Chris's advice on that, because you did it in Oxford, right? So.
I didn't, I didn't implement it in Oxford. It was, it was in place when I started.
Just, just to add on with Mike, I, I, yeah, if it's, I think there's, to Chris's point, it's a fiscal year, so even if it's a May timeframe on the warrant for May, if, you know, that gives enough runtime to.
Enough time for everybody to talk to everybody, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, you don't want to rush things.
Like you say, you're. Time is minimal. If, at all.
Well, when we rush things, they fail.
So, we get to pass it. Maybe really good. I have nothing to do until July 1st, whether it passes in November or May.
Yeah. Well, the other piece to it, too, is this would be a hit to the budget, and we need to budget that accordingly. So, I think a lot of education and consideration might take place naturally as we work through our budget to see.
Well, I, you make me think a little bit. At May, we'd be setting the budget and then putting in a program that's going to use money in the budget. So, we would be dealing with it potentially in November, whereas if we knew we were going to do this in November, we could have it built into the budget, represent in May, so.
Why can't it be presented in May?
Well, because the budget gets, this starts in January, and by the time you get to May, it's already, it's already.
Well, no, the budget, the fiscal year starts in July, and the May town meeting is set the annual budget.
Correct. But the budget process is going up to that point, so.
But I think also what he's highlighting is, then you would know what your allegation is, that like, if you're doing, as you highlighted, $60,000, and let's say you increased it to $90,000, you would know that in the May budget when it gets voted upon, versus if it changes or gets voted.
Minor, but.
Administrator weigh in on it.
Yeah. No, I would gladly. Last question on my end. We were to adopt this or something like it under the Commonwealth's rules. Are we beholden to it for a period of time?
It doesn't say anything in the law, so you would be able to, I guess, reject it, change the percentage. It appears that it just, the legislative body sets the percentage.
Meeting if you're going to change it again.
Yeah. So, but, so I guess the question, well, you're not hamstringing future boards and making that decision. If finances got tight and we needed to, you know, pull something back, that might be a lever to pull. Matt, do you want to weigh in in this early discussion?
Yeah, I think, I don't really see any logistical issues around doing it in May. I would simply submit a budget that would be $60,000 towards this program. So, that's the maximum. If I understood the presentation correctly, if you set it at 100%, it would cost us right around 60. I would take that 60 out of the budget, because if it, for some reason, did not pass town meeting, we would have 60.
$90,000, you would know that in the May budget, when it gets voted upon, versus if it changes or gets voted.
Minor, but.
Administrator weigh-in on it.
Yeah, no, I would gladly. Last question on my end. We were to adopt this, or something like it, under the Commonwealth's rules, are we beholden to it for a period of time?
It doesn't say anything in the law, so you would be able to, I guess, reject it, change the percentage. It appears that it just, the legislative body sets the percentage.
Town meeting, if you're going to change it again.
Yeah, so, but, so I guess the question, you're not hamstringing future boards and making that decision. If finances got tight, and we needed to, you know, pull something back, that might be a lever to pull. Matt, do you want to weigh in, in this early discussion?
Yeah, I think, I don't really see any logistical issues around doing it in May. I would simply submit a budget that would be $60,000 towards this program, so that's the maximum. If I understood the presentation correctly, if you set it at 100%, it would cost us right around 60. I would take that 60 out of the budget, because if it, for some reason, did not pass town meeting, we would have 60,000 extra to the bottom line. But if I build it into the budget, then it'll be there, and all of our spending projections for fiscal '26 would be in line with doing the program. I think seven or eight years ago, contemplating taking $60,000 of revenue out of the budget would actually have caused a small ripple of concern, but at this point, after we certify new growth and have a relatively strong year financially, I'm being modest and conservative with that. I think we're going to have a historic year, in terms of the growth of the tax base, and for that reason, I really don't think we'll be sweating 60 grand come budget time.
Actually, this is the one time that it works in our favor. We'd have a surplus, if it didn't go through.
Oh, yeah, right. It's the townspeople decide. Yeah, so I think, just transparent, if this board wanted to move in that direction, we absolutely make that part of the budget discussion, and you will explain that a million times to people, I'm certain.
Just a question to Chris. We already do 60,000 a year, already.
So the 60,000 we do, that is partially reimbursed by the state. So, we do get some of that back from the state, so we're not out the full amount on that. And statutorily, what we do now, we're required to by law, so we're not, we're doing something nice. We do the best we can to get the people that qualify to apply and get the, but somebody walks in with an application, and they qualify, we can't say no. So, that amount, that 60,000, we don't have control over whether we do it or not.
Will we get reimbursed more by the state, if we're more aggressive? Okay.
No. This is a complete local option. It's the town, taxpayers of Douglas would fund this.
And I see the value in it, just from a senior's perspective, and the fixed incomes and cost of things today. I think it's a very nice gesture.
Theoretically, how high could this, the 60,000 could go to what?
Yeah, theoretically, if all of our seniors lose all their savings and all their income, then a lot more would qualify. We have a heavy shooting war, and you end up with more disabled vets. A lot more people would qualify, so.
Basically, the number of the projection on the applicants.
Yeah.
And of the towns around us, loaded question, do you know, other than Oxford?
I don't know other than.
Who else might be more appealing to seniors, looking for a place to call home?
Yeah, no, and, you know, I think Les mentioned, it's more that they want to stay in their home. One component of qualifying for the exemptions in the first place is that they are a resident of Massachusetts for five years already, so, you know.
No carpetbaggers.
Well, yeah, and it's an expensive transaction to shop around for, you know, $400,000, $500,000 off a year. So I would think it would really be towards people trying to stay in their home in Douglas.
Which I think is great. Any other further questions from this initial discussion?
No.
I think it's a great idea for seniors and disabled.
Thanks for putting that information together for us.
And I'm happy to come back if you get questions further you need answered.
Oh, no doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, moving on, with the appointments. Number eight, we've got Building Facilities Construction Committee. Carol Gogolinski would like to serve on that committee. Everyone, I think, might know Carol.
Make a motion to appoint Carol to the BFCC.
Mike makes the motion to appoint Carol, and Ross, seconds. Is there a term on that?
Three years. Should say it don't have.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It's a three-year term.
You want to amend that motion?
Yeah. Want me to add that to it?
Please, yeah.
I want to amend my motion to appoint Carol Gogolinski to the BFCC for a term of three years.
Made by Mike, seconded by Hal this time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Conservation Commission, Kate Thompson. Kate.
Patiently waiting for us to get to her.
You know, I was like, welcome to municipal government. You hear about tax code. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So, tell us a little bit about yourself.
So, my name's Kate Thompson. I moved to Douglas about two and a half years ago, and finally starting to settle in a little bit, so really looking to contribute my time to the Conservation Commission, and I'm trying to think, I think it was my junior year in high school, I served as a student rep on the SecoNk Land Trust, so I learned a little bit there. It's been a little while since that time, but really, really interested in the Conservation Commission's work, and especially with all the natural resources in town, so.
What brought you to Douglas?
It's honestly about halfway between my family's house and my fiance's family's house, so it worked out really nicely. No one's fighting over it.
Yeah, wait till the third Easter, when the grandkids come.
Yep.
Speaking from, not that I'm speaking from experience at all. I think that's great. I have no real questions for you, other than to say thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate your volunteer.
Ready for one?
Yeah.
Make a motion to appoint Kate Thompson for a three-year term to the.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that we currently have a full complement. Our members are five, so Ms. Thompson's appointment would be as an alternate for now.
Okay.
Is that also a three-year term?
Yes, I believe it could be, yes.
Okay.
That's actually helpful in getting your feet wet.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd prefer it.
Okay.
Make a motion to appoint Kate Thompson to a three-year term as an alternate on the Conservation Commission.
Made by Mike, seconded by Ross. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
You, too. We've got the ZBA, Les Stevens, looking at an alternate position. Les, do you have anything you want to add?
It's, you know, I stepped before the board quite a few times. It's really just helped maintain a voting base of five, four applicants and stuff like that, should anybody recuse themselves. So I think it's worthwhile to join and maintain that voting pool.
Great.
And there's a second alternate spot open, too, so there's usually two alternates.
There's room there, for sure. Anyone else, comments, thoughts?
Term on this?
It would also be a three-year term. Comment I have is, has come before the ZBA a couple different times, and I am voted opposed in both times, and the reason for that is, Les is involved in quite a few projects around town, and I think it's more of, it would be more of a conflict and recusal on a regular basis.
We've got a full board, though, right?
Yes. You have five members on there now.
I move approval of Les to the board.
Motion's been made by Hal.
I'm kind of on the same page as Mike. I got to take names off.
Well, just to be clear, there's been a motion.
Okay.
I'll second, for the purpose of the discussion. Go ahead, Ross.
No, that's fine. I just, I'm kind of just on the same page. There's a lot of involvement. I think there's been a better, that's all.
Okay. So, my retort to that would be that this is an alternate position, and we don't really know how much more reclusion he's going to have, as opposed to the five members of that board, so I feel comfortable supporting Les, and helping us get to a better number on this particular committee. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. The ayes have it, three to two. Les, thank you for your service.
How do the ayes have it, three to two?
One, two, three. Did you vote?
Nope.
You didn't vote? Did you vote?
I'm ahead.
Yeah, I probably should double-check that and read voices, but I just assumed you'd vote for me. Okay. All right, we are going to talk MS4 Stakeholder Committee appointments. How are we doing with that?
You got a listing in your pack up.
Yep.
So the list has been populated after quite a bit of outreach by the Community Development Department. I think we might be short one member that was designated to come from the Conservation Commission, but at this point, you have a seven-member stakeholder committee, and you've got six, and I would encourage the board to make those appointments, and for the committee to give its work.
Maybe our friend, our new friend Kate might want to serve on that. So I'll make a motion, I'll entertain a motion to support the subcommittee as it's presented in our packet. So moved.
Seconded that.
Made by Ross, seconded by Les. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Number 10, this is an interesting one.
Thank you, gentlemen. I can start with the stakeholder committee right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
So, this came to the office, it was determined that a conflict of interest form was needed in regards to some work being conducted by, I imagine, a subcommittee of the Board of Health, and Corey Howard completed that conflict of interest form to let us know. Does this board have any particular concerns with his conflict of interest form, or the work of, he's looking to complete on behalf of the town?
Just through the chair, I know he disclosed the conflict at the Board of Health meeting and stuff like that, and he abstained from the voting matter, so. I saw the tape, because it was something else that was on the WU, so.
He's got the hobby farm.
Yeah, he raises some goats, produces some goat milk, and some wonderful soaps.
Yep.
Has some chickens. I know Corey personally, I can tell you his knowledge of animal husbandry, is that the proper phrase? Did I do good there? Is, on that board, is second to none. I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that he would have the animals' interests at heart over and above making a buck. So with that, if we need approval of this, I would certainly entertain that.
So moved.
Made by Hal.
Seconded that.
Seconded by Les. All those in favor? Aye. Is unanimous? He does a wonderful chicken, by the way, if you haven't caught that video, the Board of Health.
Good chicken, yeah.
Yeah, he does a good cluck. Matt, we don't have minutes in our packet, we're going to skip that over. I'm wondering, due to the remote nature and the intimacy of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrative Goals, if we want to table that one as well, or do you want to tackle that?
Well, I don't think that this is something that's ever finished, right? It's something that's a living document, and as the board reaches consensus on things that they want to direct my efforts toward, then they should have a vote to have that amendment, have the goals updated. From time to time, I'd like to keep you updated on what's going on with some of the goals. I know one of them was to make sure all the ARPA money went out on time, and I can give you an update on that later or now. I think we're in good shape, really, to be finished with the bidding process and letting out of contracts, probably by October. Another goal that's on there is that the town administrator would seek professional certification, which is a voluntary process through a professional organization called the ICMA, and I will be attending the conference this year. Attendance at the conference, and completion of continuing education programs at the conference will count towards that certification, so I'll be making progress on that front there. We've got quite a few other things. I just want to make sure that, I've repeated this in prior meetings, I'll repeat it again, in order for a goal to be included on the list, there needs to be a vote of the select board and a majority vote, and that keeps this clean and keeps the process moving forward so that the majority of the board, as its consensus changes with its complement, as that, as the points of view change, the goals list can change in the administrator's efforts, will be redirected accordingly. One other piece I want to update you on, which would be the last thing I'll say on the goals, anyway, is that we are trying very hard to implement a program of annual evaluation and the setting of management-level salaries in accordance with the evaluation, and to this date, we're most consistent around evaluating the performance of those who have contracts that come before the select board for a vote, but that rubric has to be extended to all department heads and implemented. And what we're doing here is building that rubric, so to speak, so building the criteria for each individual department head, and what their evaluation will reflect, and that's driven not only by their job description, but by the skills and learning from experience that need to be part of the department head's portfolio of value to the town. So, that's still a work in progress, but it is my goal to have that done by this fall, and begin the evaluation process, so that the setting of management-level salaries for the fiscal '26 budget will be backed up with a written evaluation. So having said that, I think we can, unless there's comments, we can move on from this
I wish Lisa were here to help me identify what the 17th looks like. Part of me would like to see that document as it stands today, and have a board review of that document with an eye towards either adding or deleting items from it. I may put that on the 17th, may push that off, depending on.
I will be not in attendance on that.
Okay. All right, so we'll push it off. Yeah, we'll push that off. It's important, have a full board.
Happy birthday, too, but.
Well.
The presence accepted.
You are, presence accepted, and as is.
Congratulations.
Excused.
Ice cream, yeah.
Excused absence.
Tracability.
Matt, I'm going to go back a little bit. I skipped over opening the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant. We get a head start on that with a motion.
Make a motion to open the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant.
Seconded by Mike, seconded by Hal. All those in favor? Aye. So that is moving forward. Highway Department, property discussion, as well as the, does 16 blend into that, the environmental report for Redell Road?
Blend into what?
Does 15 blend into 16, the Highway Department, property discussion, and the environmental report for Redell Road?
Yeah, actually, I think in an earlier iteration of feedback on the draft agenda, I thought that was just one item. What I'm seeking for from you guys is authorization to spend, you know, about $5,000 out of the existing select board's budget for fiscal '25, to conduct a 21E, so-called Phase 1 study of the target property. It is part of our due diligence. I think we should. due diligence. I think we should complete that due diligence before even bringing a recommendation to town meeting. There's information that we should have in hand before we make any kind of recommendation at all. This would be a buyer's responsibility, and thus, the sooner I can get this off the ground, the better off will be for November Town Meeting.
Make a motion on that, but what was the dollar about?
Five thousand.
Five.
Five thousand. Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to spend $5,000 for the Phase 1 21E on, what's that?
Third year old search for the motion.
Riddell Road.
I'll second that motion.
Made by Mike, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Get your rolling with that, Matt. Town Administrator's report?
So as previously mentioned, I think we're making excellent progress on getting these last ARPA contracts out the door. So I received indication today that the electrical and HVAC work at the fire station bid package is ready for posting. The engineer is going to charge us through for electronic bidding process, but that's the best way to do complicated building projects so all the plans and everything can be uploaded where the vendors can see them. Secondly, in the ARPA category, this is a partially ARPA-funded project, which is the security cameras at schools. And that contract has been signed and executed by all parties. And we are now awaiting the assignment of a project manager from the installer, from, the firm is known as ENE Security. And then lastly, we have the Depot Street Water Project. I know that part of that contract is going to have to be funded from the Water Department and its enterprise fund. However, under state law in Massachusetts, we can conduct a procurement under Chapter 30, Section 39m, in pump-up works projects. We can buy a, we can do a materials-only contract, which is what we're putting up to bid within the next week. And that will probably use up a large portion of the ARPA funds that were set aside for the Depot Street Water Project. Exactly how far into the line they get is going to be a question, I think, of how the bids come out and what the future plans for the town necessitate. At the moment, we don't want to lose the opportunity to upgrade the very old water pipe that's under Depot Street up to the terminus of the road so that we pick up all of our existing customers as well as the municipal center. We need to separate our domestic and fire suppression service into the municipal center in order to support the sprinkler system that will need to have a place to utilize the entire building fully under modern codes. I think we made the decision quite some time ago that it was a waste of time and energy to appeal any finding that the second floor needs to be sprinkled before it can be used. We have an existing sprinkler system in the first floor and the extension of our service. And marrying the service to a modern fire alarm is just a, just a step that we can take that will prolong the useful life of the municipal center for many years. It is a good judgment. So we're going to use that federal money to set that into motion. As far as the rest of what we're working on, I know that many are aware of the video featuring Douglas's economic development efforts that will be shown at my conference in the third week of September. I've seen the first cut, the director's first cut. I think it's very nice. It's very complimentary to the town and its people and what we're trying to accomplish with balancing economic development with rural living. And I had some small edits to make, and I know they are in progress. I'll be finishing it up with the producer this week. My only caveat is, you know, they told us five minutes. They actually gave us a tape that's six and a half minutes. And as nice as it is, I'm working very hard to make sure that all of our volunteers and employees that participated in different shots to create the video are actually included. But as we all know, that some things do get onto the cutting room floor that have a hard time getting back. So we're fighting that battle a little bit, the producer and I. So I think there's some places where he can rearrange the resources so he gets everybody in. But it's a very, like I said, a very detailed and, you know, it's not just a feel-good fluff piece with piano music in the background. It's got a lot of good information about Douglas's story. And at the same time, it's an appropriate summary for five and a half, six minutes of video. Other thing from my goals that I, I guess I forgot to mention in the conversation about goals, but it's been very much on my mind now for the last year to year and a half that the options for economic development on the east side of town, especially those properties that have already been tied up by a developer, would benefit greatly from an innovative approach to energy supply to that area. And I know Hal and I have had some conversations about renewable energy and municipal light and power. And if, for those of you who want to bother to read it, it's only a couple pages long, but in the Economist Magazine, which is a very reputable commentary on the world economy, there's an article presently running regarding battery storage and renewable energy and the increasingly competitive trend in the industry known as artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence requires very large data centers and extensive network of data centers. Because the amount of computing power that's necessary to run the system is a great deal more than simply storing data. And there is a marriage being made between battery storage and renewable energy and data centers. And if the town of Douglas wants to help our country be competitive in this industry, we would do well to review all of our institutional opportunities made possible by Massachusetts state law to have our own municipal light and power so that the town would participate in a limited but necessary fashion to guarantee the energy supply necessary for data centers to consider our Douglas sites as suitable for their use. Because frankly, it's, if you're used to looking for a financial opportunity, this should be screaming at you because data centers will not simply evaporate and go away overnight. This is not a Fortune 50 company that could have all of its value destroyed by scandal or stock market crash. Data center technology is going to be on the rise for a long time once they're locked in. They become lucrative, tax-paying and rent-paying clients for the long term. And that is one way to lock in the prosperity that the town is hoping for into its tax base in order to forestall any future discussion about the limits of that, of our ability to run the government and have the services provided to people that they want and are willing to pay for. So that's, in a nutshell, is why I've felt so strongly about this for a long time. And I think I'm going to, once all this ARPA money is out the door and the contracts are being implemented, really shove my pencil and just, it looks like I'm going to have to run with the issue from my office because there's a lot of heavy lifting that might be involved. But in long story short, we do not have sufficient electrical energy connection as we are currently configured on the grid to support data center construction in Douglas. We need to be thoughtful about how we might work with the grid. But if we can't get it all from the grid, we need to think about how the town government or a coalition of local governments could put together a solution. Because I had Chris Puck just run a theoretical case scenario around what is the value to a community of having a data center play as part of its economic development strategy. And, you know, frankly, those towns that have been able to take this opportunity, I don't want to exaggerate, but, or put words in their mouth, but they paraphrase what they've said. They said it is a long-term, strong revenue generator for a municipal government. So that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor too many issues, but I'm open to questions about if there's something that's going on and I may have not mentioned yet.
In a more mundane manner, can you give us a mosquito update?
Oh, sure, which I meant to do. So the spray was completed last week, I believe it was Thursday night when it was all done. I just want to reiterate to folks who may be listening that we have taken, and I say we comprehensively, the select board, regardless of its membership and the town administration, have for a longest time, at least while I've been working for you, taken the point of view that an emergency needs to be a true emergency, that we're looking for an imminent threat to life or property as the major trigger, the only trigger that will motivate us to call a situation an emergency. And that's to the limit of our authority as a municipal government. That's the philosophy that motivates people and will generate results. But for those issues where the state government is in charge of determining what an emergency is and what actions they will take using their existing authority to address them, that is a state project. So when we put out messages and we try to keep people informed, that we see that as our responsibility to let everyone know what is going on. And in some cases, we have interacted with state officials to raise some flags of caution about whether or not to proceed with certain activities. There are some battles that we can win. There are some that we cannot. And once the state decided to spray for mosquitoes in southern Worcester County, there wasn't going to be a whole lot that we could do to prevent that. And those of our neighbors, Webster and Northbridge in particular, that are part of the central Massachusetts mosquito abatement group, they had already done it. So I didn't see this as a hill to die on necessarily. I personally would have waited for more data. I would have liked to have seen some positive test for triple E with mosquitoes inside Douglas before getting all that spray put down out on our roads. But having said that, I think we got the message out to folks as much as we could through Facebook. We did send out a coded message, letting people know that this was happening and it was on the town's website for quite some time. The Board of Health discussed the matter at some great length. The process is complete. As we all know, the threat from mosquitoes to transmit certain viruses won't really be over, or it won't be diminished until we have a good hard freeze. And, you know, increasingly, because our winters are, have, we've been in a warm, wet pattern with a lot of our winters, some of these mosquitoes are living through the winter and reproducing through the winter. But having said that, you know, a good cold hard freeze does diminish the threat significantly. So it will be late October, perhaps early November, before we really are truly completely out of the mess. And the other thing I would just reiterate to people is, this is kind of an interesting thing about nature. A triple E threat, it requires many, many elements of the system to all be in alignment. Because there's more than one species of mosquito involved in the transmission of this virus. There are certain mosquitoes that only bite birds, and they spread the disease from bird to bird. And then other mosquitoes that bite birds and mammals, bite a bird, then they bite a mammal. So it's a really complex chain of things that have to occur. And the slightest disruption to that chain will diminish the threat significantly. And that is the, that is the goal of spraying when spraying is called for. So that's, just a quick reminder of what our role is as a local government with these affairs. We try to have our voices heard, but once the state makes a final decision, we do our best to comply with it or not get in the way of it, make sure that people are aware of the decision the state has made and what it means for them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of tonight's meeting? Seeing as none, we'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Make, so move?
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for purpose of interest in real property Riddell Road and 331 Main Street, post office lease, also collective bargaining for DESPA, and to reconvene into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Motion's been made by Ross, seconded by Hal. Roll call vote? Smith, aye.
David, aye.
Stone, aye.
Patrick, aye. Sealy's aye.